Order in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, notice of meetings and agendas were posted and furnished to all news media and persons requesting notification. A, executive session, public body may hold a meeting closely to public for one of the more following reasons, discussion of negotiations, exit, proposed contract arrangements, and proposed purchase or sale of property through receipt of legal advice with the legal advice related to a pending threatened or potential claim or matters covered by the attorney-client privilege, settlement of legal claims, or the position of a public agency and other adversary situations involving the assertion against the agency of a claim. Taps map number 063-26-14-001 and number 063-26-14-002. Exit three, project tail fair, tax map 087-00-04-001. Two fifty-two, Russell Street, legacy funeral home vehicle rental, nickel plate MCIP, Jasper County versus Western Surety Company, treasurer, South Carolina appellate course case, is that what that is? Number two zero two one dash zero 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 nine four one, premium pay, Bowlin Hall, discussion regarding development of security personnel or devices, detention center Clemente C., Pinney, Jasper County Government Building, discussion of matters relating to the proposed location expansion of the provision of services encouraging location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by a public body. Prospect update, Tyco letter of intent, purchase and sale agreement, project minister C. At this time, I'll call-
Mr. Chairman, this is current air case, your appellate course is twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-one, that looks like Tyco.
Thank you, twenty twenty-four. At this time, I'll call for a motion to go into executive session.
Make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss the items that were read-
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye. All right, thank you, motion carries, and everyone to chambers for executive session. At this time, we'll call for a motion to come out of executive session.
I make a motion that we come out of executive session at this time.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Do we have any motions as a result of our executive session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have two motions.
Yes, sir.
All right. First motion is, I move to authorize the county attorney to execute on behalf of Jasper County a conflict waiver as discussed in executive session regarding the interest of Jasper County and Andrew Fulgham and Kimberly Burgess in the Skinner versus Fulgham and Burgess lawsuit bearing the South Carolina appellate case number twenty twenty-four dash zero 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 nine four one.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries.
And my second motion is, make a motion to authorize the administrator with the assistance of the county attorney to consummate the settlement in the Jasper County versus Western Surety Company lawsuit on the terms discussed in executive session.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. We have a third motion.
Move to approve the resolution prepared ratifying the sale of the Ohio Grading property at Cypress Reach.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. At this time, please join me in the pledge of allegiance, followed by invocation by Councilman Ryle.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, thank you for this day and thank you for this time together that we can come as a county and discuss important issues for our citizens. And Father, we ask that you give us guidance and wisdom tonight as we make decisions on these issues. And Father, we also ask for prayers for those tragic events over this weekend in our nation. And Father, we ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Welcome. I'd first like to apologize for being late. We have had a lot of discussion going on, so we were running behind on our executive session, so we apologize for the tardiness. At this time, we'll call for approval of the consent agenda, or any changes thereto?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to remove twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven from the consent agenda.
To be added on to the action items.
Yes.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. And the approval of the regular agenda, please. You have a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the approval of the regular agenda.
Thank you, we have a second? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. At this time, we have the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting to Ms. Kimberly Burgess. Mr. Fulgham?
Ms. Burgess. So, this is a, an award that is awarded by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, and Jasper County has been awarded this certificate of excellence in financial reporting since two thousand eight, or earlier. And this, this particular award is for the fiscal year ended June thirty, two thousand and twenty-three, and our financial report has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. And I wanted to say that I'm very proud that Jasper County has once again received this certificate of excellence, and that this award is not the, is the result of a group, a team of people who come together each year, including the county administrator, Mr. Fulgham, the county's consultants Crowley and Wetzler, the finance department, and the directors and department heads who have provided the data and the information necessary to prepare the financial report. And I wanted to say that I look forward to continuing the excellence in financial reporting and to continue to carry that tradition on.
Thank you, Ms. Burgess, congratulations. We appreciate your hard work. Next, we have Chief Russell Wells, Jasper County Fire Rescue Staff, has earned awards as well, and we're happy to have him with us here to be recognized.
Thank you, Chairman, members of council. This will be a recap of a press release that went out October twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three. Our staff were summoned to a working structure fire up off of Gray's Highway. Out of that, the nine-one-one telecommunications officers guided the occupant to take actions on an attempt for self-rescue. They were unable to do so. Several staff members engaged in rescue techniques, and Deputy Chief Darren Vaughn made a recommendation to the South Carolina Firefighters Association on meritorious action awards, and the committee for the South Carolina Firefighters Association on June fifteen, two thousand and twenty-four awarded Lieutenant Blankenship with a meritorious service action. Ironically enough, not ironically enough, but within twenty-four hours of that award being announced, Firehouse Magazine, which is a nationally syndicated publication for fire service, also made notification to us that we, the department would receive a meritorious service action. So, before you stands Lieutenant Blankenship, we just want to take a moment and publicly recognize his, his actions, saved the life in coordination with several staff members, but it was he that was recognized for the meritorious action. Sadly enough, at zero eight-thirty hours this morning, I also received a letter of retirement from Lieutenant Blankenship. So, with that, we'll be providing you with additional information regarding his retirement.
Lieutenant Blankenship, we want to thank you for your sacrifice and putting yourself above others, and you've serviced our county and the citizens, so you enjoy your retirement. We're obviously sad to see you leave, but we're very appreciative of you and your sacrifice, and thank you kindly, and congratulations.
Council members, thank you for your time. It's been an eventful year. What started with promise has grown a little, I dare say, unpleasant, but not everything I try will be a home run. There have been mistakes, quite certain I will make some more. Progress and improvements are not made by sitting still. However, my team and I have learned from all of it, the good, the not-so-good, every bit of it. We will continue to learn and grow. We have made tremendous improvements in just a year's time. During the formative time in my office, when communication with us, between us, was a wee bit more cordial, the council allowed me to contract with a company whose specialty is cash management. I wanted the best return on our taxpayers' money, and I think we have delivered. I have mentioned it before, but I believe that it may be beneficial to hear it straight from them. I would like to introduce Tyler Frame and Garrett McDonald from Cash Fest to give a brief overview of what we have managed to do this year with the accounts that I have been given. Tyler, Garrett, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer, and thank you, Mr. Chair and council members. It's great to be here this evening. I must say, before we talk, just a brief moment about Cash Fest. Stepping into these chambers today reminded me of a time when I was a kid, and I was having an argument with my brother, and my dad said, you know, "Don't argue with your brother," and we kind of went back and forth a little bit, and not too long after that, my dad brought me to our local county council called the Legislature in, in New York where I grew up. And the room was a lot like this room this evening, where there was a lot of people, and there were a lot of items on the agenda, and he was trying to impress upon me the importance of coming and talking about local issues, and so it's so great to see everyone here this evening exercising, you know, democracy. Cash Fest is a tool that helps counties all over the country earn and save all they can on their cash, and it's a data platform that provides and complements finance teams of counties of all sizes to help them do whatever they can for the taxpayer dollars. And certainly, higher interest rates today have impacted everyone in this room, right? We see it in the cost of goods, we see it with our auto loans higher, we see it with mortgage loans higher, but one opportunity with higher interest rates when it comes to county governments is to help the taxpayers earn some more on their cash. And of course, it's a little bit more complicated than earning more with higher interest rates. We define the time horizon of cash to find out how we can keep cash safe and liquid and available for payroll and AP, and to do all the things that the county needs to do to operate. And we also are helping to work with financial providers to get the best bang for the buck for arguably the taxpayer's most precious resource, which is their cash. So, just like many of us in this room this evening, we all want to make sure that the cash that we have is earning and saving the most that it can, and so that's what Cash Fest does for our counties all across the U.S., for cities and school districts in South Carolina, and that's what we're working on with Jasper County. So Tyler's going to talk a little bit, a bit, a little bit more about the particulars of how we've been able to work together as a team and generate about two-point-two million dollars more in interest for the taxpayers, but we want to say thank you so much again, Mr. Chairman, and, and council members, for allowing us to come this evening, and just say congratulations for the work that you all have worked together to accomplish on behalf of your taxpayers, so thank you so much. Tyler?
Thanks, Garrett. It's great to be here again. Thank you all so much for having us. Again, I'm Tyler from Three Plus One. Garrett and I have been working with Jasper County for just about a year now, and we were hoping to share a little bit of an update, give you the results that have been achieved thus far, and just share some data points that really substantiate everything that's being done from a cash management perspective at Jasper County. First and foremost, we are looking at every single dollar of the accounts that the treasurer's office has been given access to, and looking at every debit and every credit, ensuring from a safety and liquidity perspective that you are protected. The three pillars of public finance, safety, liquidity, and then yield, coming last, a third, we want to cover that safety and liquidity piece first. The way we do that is by stress testing your cash, ensuring that in any type of scenario, you have enough on deposit to operate, to pay payroll, pay AP, pay for needed capital projects, uncovering how long you have a dollar, from the moment a tax dollar is collected to the moment that same tax dollar is spent, giving the treasurer's office the confidence to put cash to work where possible. We like to say that nothing bad comes from more data and planning, and that's what Cash Fest is providing the county, is that safety and liquidity piece to ensure you're always These are the accounts that we have access to and that we're monitoring for the county, we're stress testing them, again, every debit and every credit, to understand what is the time horizon of each dollar, how long is it available for, and what can it be used for? What is the marketplace willing to pay for it? You can see that we're looking at what are your trends, understanding what initiatives the county has coming up in the future, and how is your cash position changing so that you can position yourselves to continue to serve the residents of Jasper County. Getting down to the nitty-gritty and the numbers, overall, since we've been working with Jasper County, the treasurer's office, and council, you all have generated over two-point-two million dollars in non-tax revenue streams for your residents. We really compliment you for that, that's incredible. We actually have a third-party benchmarking tool called our Cash Fest Score. It's used across the country by counties, cities, school districts, and it's an objective way to measure progress from a cash and liquidity management perspective, just in nine months, so from when we started working together just about a year ago through the end of April, the county's Cash Fest Score has increased from twenty-seven to fifty-one out of one hundred, one of the faster improvements that we've seen nationwide. One other thing we wanted to commend you on is that interest revenue has gone up by one-hundred-and-sixty percent over the last twelve months compared to the initial twelve-month period that we analyzed. Now, obviously, as Garrett mentioned, interest rates during that same period of time have also gone up. During that same period, though, they went up by forty-two percent, so interest revenue up by one-hundred-and-sixty percent, while benchmark interest rates were up forty-two percent during the same period. Overall, annually, we've identified the opportunity to generate over two-point-six million dollars, again, in non-tax revenue streams. We're looking at the county's financial relationships to ensure that everything's copacetic from a bank fee perspective, and we're helping generate new resources for the treasurer's office to ensure that we can take some of the things off of their plate from a liquidity and cash management perspective, so they can focus on other aspects of the Looking forward to the rest of two thousand and twenty-four and two thousand and twenty-five, we've identified through our stress test modeling that there's some more cash that could be put to work, that could generate an additional three-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand dollars in non-tax revenue. We want to continue to collaborate and share benchmark data with your financial providers to ensure that you have the best arrangement possible for the taxpayers, and also just continue looking at every single account that the county has access to so that we can ensure, again, from a safety and liquidity perspective, every single dollar of Jasper County and its taxpayers have is protected. Thank you all so much for the opportunity to provide an update. We're really excited to be working with you all, and we really commend you for taking this initiative for your taxpayers. Again, over two-point-two million dollars of a net benefit in just about a year, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tyler and Garrett. As you can see, we have a little bit more we can do with this. I realize you may have some questions. I don't want to hold everybody up, we look like we have a full slate, so if you have any other questions, feel free to email me, and me and my team will answer those as best we can. Again, thank you for your time tonight, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Keith Hughes, Jasper County Rescue Mission, JARM update. Welcome, Mr. Hughes.
My name is Keith Hughes. I am the current president of the Board of Directors of Jasper Animal Rescue Mission. I would like to thank Mr. Fulgham, Mr. Salz, Mr. Ryle, and Ms. Clark for giving me the opportunity to update the council on the status of JARM as it stands today. As you are aware, we terminated the services of the executive director of JARM on June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, due to our need to take the mission in a new and different direction, but while maintaining our same mission. Today is day thirty-one. In the last thirty-one days, we have re-engaged and welcomed back all the volunteers that wanted to put their passion and their talents towards an outstanding cause, and man, have they delivered. I got a little side note here. Shortly after June fourteenth, I posted a volunteer sign-in sheet in our lobby, and it was my estimate at that time that for every one man-hour of staff, we would have approximately ten man-hours of volunteer time logged. I don't know where that's going to line up, but I'm pretty sure I'm going to be pretty close to that. The point being here that volunteers are absolutely crucial to the operation, and we will continue to focus on them. We were able to keep the doors open from day one, all the while caring for all the dogs and cats that were already in our care, cleaning and organizing the entire facility, and dealing with the public on a daily basis with their needs in the form of strays, fosters, and adoptions. I will admit that at times it was a bit chaotic, but we are getting the hang of it, and we are getting better every single day. We immediately hired a shelter manager, Sharon Allard, she couldn't be here tonight due to something that was going on at the shelter, and she comes to us with well over fifteen years of experience. We also hired two new kennel technicians, and finally, this past week, we hired a certified vet med tech with over ten years of shelter experience, and she is assessing and caring for every animal on the site. Over the, this past month, Kim Album from the Bissell Foundation reached out to Steve Carrier, manager of the Florida State Animal Response Coalition, a division of Florida SPCA, to come back and reassess our current conditions and operations. If you remember, that was, that was the team that was called in, in the November dealings with JARM. The Bissell Foundation provided trained staff and a lot of PPE to us at JARM for an entire week at absolutely no cost to JARM, or the citizens of Jasper County. During this week, we received invaluable training and staffing, along with the suggestions and protocols that will help us be more efficient and effective performing our daily tasks from this date forward. We also received much-needed help from Beaufort County Animal Services, Hilton Head Humane, Rascals Rescue, person is in the back there, Palmetto Animal League, and the Charlotte Humane Society, which was also brought in by Kim Album and the Bissell Foundation. So as you can see, we have had a lot of support from outside agencies, helping us at JARM provide the required care for the animals we currently house there, and we are so very, very grateful for it. We will work very hard to assist our local partners, to also be a valuable part of the rescue business, as we all have the very same goal at the end of the day. Going forward, we aim to provide the absolute best care and shelter rescue animal care. We have secured several donations for much-needed items and services that are needed at the current facility, but we still need a new facility. We will also be addressing, oh, and we are going to be laying out a plan very soon to help make this happen just as soon as possible. We will also be addressing the critical and immediate need for new animal ordinances that will help reduce the animal population while reducing the overall cost of animal care to the residents of Jasper County, and we are working on a plan for a spay and neuter initiative that will be low-cost or no-cost to the residents of Jasper County. All in all, we have been very busy and continue to be very busy reorganizing JARM to, to be what Mary Elise Gabbard, the original founder of JARM, had envisioned JARM to be almost twenty years ago. Finally, I am honored to be a part of this organization. This is probably the toughest undertaking of my entire life, but I am not alone in this endeavor. I having, I have an engaged board of directors, experienced staff, and experienced volunteers, and I want to stress the, the volunteers, with a variety of different backgrounds and experiences that are all united in our goal to transform JARM into a viable model for the animals in our care and for the citizens of Jasper County. For all of us at JARM, we thank you, and we look forward to providing you with updates as to our progress at any future council meetings.
Mr. Hughes, thank you. You are a breath of fresh air, and you all are making-
You are a breath of fresh air, and you all make a ton of progress, and I know there's a big need there, and we appreciate you and what you're doing in your board, that you guys are bringing to the table some things we've never had, so thank you for that very much, very, very much. Any questions or comments?
No, I just, I was going to ask about the spay and neuter, but you asked.
Stay tuned.
Yes, I'm looking forward.
All right. Yeah, we've got something in the works right now.
Just wanted to say, thank you very much. You've really done a great job. First time, I've been down to JARM many times, first time I've ever been asked to take it to work. I received a big call.
Well, thank you, Mr. Kent.
Thank you, Kent.
All right, thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Walt Carton, Parkland Law Firm, for a presentation on Skinner versus Foljam and Burgess. Welcome, Mr. Carton.
Thank you, Chairman Salz. Mr. Chairman, Members of Council, my name is Walt Carton, I'm with the Parkland Law Firm out of Columbia. We have been retained to represent the county, Mr. Andrew Foljam and Ms. Kimberly Burgess, in the lawsuit that was brought by the Treasurer. My goal today is going to be to give the public and this council an overview of the actual facts that are at issue in this case. There's been a lot of innuendo in the press, a lot of different press releases, news stories about it, and I found that they are factually inaccurate. So what I want to give you today, I want to give you a brief background about what led to this lawsuit, I want to talk about what the lawsuit actually entails, and I want to talk about the next steps and some of the complexities that we have to work with here. So let's start back in the beginning, when Mr. Skinner, back in November of 2022, was elected to the position of Treasurer. Almost immediately, he sought assistance from the county, which the county provided. The county has bent over backwards to provide Mr. Skinner with everything that he needs. We have authorized training and travel for his staff to be able to receive the kind of training that they need. We've provided onboarding services, given them different engagements from CPA firms to provide account reconciliation. I'm quite certain we're paying for the Cashfest presentation that you just saw there today, for those other tools that are there. But there are a few different audits that have taken place over the past couple of years now that I think are important. I think in order to understand the context in which this lawsuit arises, you really have to understand. One is Malden and Jenkins. There was an audit conducted at the request of the Treasurer in July of 2023. There was also an assistance engagement with posting transactions and reconciliation by Crowley Wexler and Associates that was done in March of 2024. That was needed because the Treasurer had ceased posting certain transactions to the county ledger, so it was almost impossible for us to reconcile books, so an outside firm was retained to do that. In addition, after the Wexler findings came out, the Baird Audit Group conducted an audit at this council's behest in April of 2024. And I want to read a few things to you about what these different engagements and audits found. First, with the Wexler CPA findings, I'm going to read this into the record verbatim because I think it's important. "The change in the recently elected Treasurer's offices has created significant deficiencies in the accounting system of the county. The previous Treasurer recorded all the cash receipts into the county's software that were then monitored by Finance. This allowed for the proper segregation of duties. Since the newly-elected Treasurer is no longer posting the cash receipts into the accounting system, we would recommend that Finance get access to all information, including bank accounts, without having to rely on another office to fulfill the accounting requirements of the county." Other findings of the report were even more troubling. Revenues had been identified incorrectly and being placed in the wrong accounts. Delinquent taxes were included in current tax apportionments, which resulted in delinquent taxes being paid out twice in two months. No cash receipts have been recorded for any accounts during the period this Wexler CPA investigated things. Once the Wexler CPA findings were presented to this council, the council realized that this was a problem, realized that they needed to get the county's finances in order. And so they retained the Baird Audit Group to evaluate the processes in place at the Treasurer's Office from July 1, 2023, to February 29, 2024. And Baird issued a report on April 29, 2024. And in that report, there are a few things that I want to highlight for this council so that everyone understands the type of findings that were included in the Baird report. Funds were placed into incorrect accounts. Account transfers were made backwards, and some transfers were duplicates. Treasurer improperly paid a bonus of $750 to four staff members and a bonus of $1,000 to himself, using funds from the License Plate Decal Fund, which he asserted he had plenary authority to exercise, hadn't used however he wanted to. The Treasurer overpaid the town originally $33,000 in field loop tax refunds and failed to separate out vehicle tax payments from ad valorem property tax payments, resulting in Richland not being able to accurately record payments on their end. Additionally, the report noted none of the staff had formal accounting backgrounds, complete lack of understanding of how reconciliation documentation procedures should be used in a system like this particular county, and that there was a supporting documentation issue about where the source of funds came from, the amount of the funds, and how those funds should be coded to be properly recorded in the county's books. Once this was presented to County Council on May 15, a spirit of collaboration continued. This group came together and decided that they wanted to work with the Treasurer. They wanted to get him whatever resources he needed to develop policies, operational policies and procedures to fix the issues that were identified by Wexler and the Baird Audit Group. And that spirit of cooperation was met with less than three weeks later, on Thursday morning, June 6. The efforts were brought to a halt when the Treasurer initiated a press conference and filed a lawsuit against Mr. Andy Foljam and Ms. Kim Burgess. Let's talk a little bit about what the lawsuit is. This was a petition for the Supreme Court of South Carolina to exercise its original jurisdiction to issue what's called a writ of mandamus. A writ of mandamus is an order of a court to direct a government official to do some ministerial act. The problem here is that the government officials they've directed to do this act don't have access or the ability to do anything that's requested in the lawsuit. Treasurer alleges that there are 96 to 116 accounts out there, and he should have signatory authorities. To be clear, that is the ability to write checks, to move money around over all of these accounts. There have been some recent statements in the press that he may not, that may not be his desire to have that kind of access, but I'm focusing, just for the purposes of what I'm telling you today, what the lawsuit says and what the lawsuit requests. His request for access is based on Ordinance 2-66, the Jasper County Code, which essentially says that funds generated by fees collected and monies received by the county's department's employees and/or elected officials shall be timely deposited with the county Treasurer's Office. We believe that the responsive pleading we have filed on behalf of Ms. Burgess and Mr. Foljam show that this is an improperly considered lawsuit, and that we have every expectation that the Supreme Court will not take this lawsuit. The primary legal issue, if the court does take it, would be what is the scope of the Treasurer's right to have signatory authority over certain accounts maintained by the county, other elected officials, such as the sheriff, probate judge, and others, and distinct political subdivisions? Now, in order to answer this question, and because it's not, I believe there's a perception in the community that just because it has Jasper County in the name, well, then the Treasurer should have complete access to that. That is not how this works. That is not, that completely does not give effect to the complexity of county finance. And so in order to figure out which funds are subject to the Treasurer's direction and control, we have to dig into what those accounts are, where they came from. We've got to look at things like, are there other laws out there in the state that direct who has control of these accounts? So just for the general public and for the council, in South Carolina, every county, to my knowledge, essentially has a segregated function. The Treasurer is primarily in charge of collecting tax revenue, giving that tax revenue out to the appropriate taxing entities within the jurisdiction of the county or under the umbrella for which he collects taxes. And then the Treasurer anticipates the needs of the county and invests funds that are not immediately needed. County finance, a county finance office, is more akin to what this, what most people would think of, like a CFO, or a comptroller, or an actual accounting department. So all these various divisions of the county are collecting money, interacting with the public, and from time to time, in certain accounts, they transmit those money back to Treasurer accounts, accounts held by the Treasurer and directed, so that he can make sure he does his job under the law. But for the vast majority of the time, they're collecting these fees, dispersing fees from them as a practical matter to ensure that the county can actually function. And then again, there are state statutes and court rules, which we'll talk about a few of those, that dictate who can have access to funds, who can direct those funds, and in certain instances, it's not the Treasurer. So here is a general overview of the types of accounts that we're talking about here. The school district, sheriff, clerk of court, registrar of deeds, probate court, magistrate court, and then other general county accounts, where we're gathering up, again, business taxes, fees, things like that from the general public. We're going to go through these, and I just want to show you, kind of highlight some of the issues with each of these subcategories of accounts. So the school district is a separate political subdivision, completely independent. It can write debt, it can do all sorts of things. It has complete autonomy over how it spends its operational accounts, and that's done by, that's done by South Carolina Code annotated 59-71-180. The district can maintain its own bank account and has the right to dictate how its monies are expended. So the Treasurer has absolutely no right to control those funds, but yet his lawsuit asks for this county to provide signatory authority over another political subdivisions' funds. These are also types of funds, and when we look at what they are, these are lunch program and people activity funds. So why on earth the Treasurer of Jasper County would need access to a local elementary school's PTO, Parent Teacher Organization funds that are set aside for buying playground equipment, I don't know. There are at least two accounts that the Treasurer does have access for, for the school district. One is a bond fund, and then what's called a Treasurer account. And that's because there's a specific statute that requires him to have access over those district bond funds for those Treasurer accounts, and it's cited here at the bottom. The sheriff, the sheriff's accounts are an even more complicated matter. Right now, we see that he has approximately eight accounts, petty cash, fingerprint processing, sex offender registry, drug fund, vice, drug seizures escrow, and seizure of funds. Just to talk about a few of these, just to highlight the complexity, the drug seizure escrow, the sheriff is statutorily entitled, excuse me, to hold those funds and actually retain a certain amount of those funds and use them to finance certain approved operations by statute. Fees for fingerprint processing, the sheriff collects those, and they turn them over monthly to the Treasurer. So we're talking about practical, you know, practical application of how this works. All these little departments of the county do an interactive business with the members of the public, and they're bringing those fees back on a regular basis to the Treasurer, he then has control of them. Sex offender registry, some of those things have to be remitted to SLED, so why the Treasurer would need access to those funds is beyond me, and certainly, I don't think it's going to be successful in this lawsuit. The clerk of court accounts, there are approximately 40 of these accounts, but that can change at any moment. I think there's been an assertion that we can't possibly tell how many accounts the county has. Well, that's because these, you know, the clerk of court can go out and start their own accounts when they need to. If they need to deposit funds from a litigant or from a condominium, they can start a new account to hold those funds, and they have complete discretion and control, subject to court rules, as to how they invest those and what interest-bearing accounts they can put them in, and how those funds are deposited. To be perfectly frank, there is no universe in which funds deposited into a court by litigants should ever be subject to being invested by this county. So why the Treasurer would need signatory authority over those accounts is simply an abset. And then there are other county accounts that are out there. I've hinted on a couple of these just recently, so I won't belabor the point. Got business license fees, again, collected by the Department of the County and remitted back to the Treasurer on a monthly basis. And again, that's contemplated by Ordinance 2-66, which this county has in place to dictate what funds go to the Treasurer. It contemplates that various departments of the county would collect these fees and transmit them at regular intervals, and that's exactly what's happening. So, again, without belaboring, I know you have a full agenda, the next steps, at least from the county's perspective, are this. The Supreme Court's going to rule in some amount of time. The Supreme Court doesn't tell us when they're going to rule, but it will be probably several months on the Treasurer's petition. If they accept the petition in the original jurisdiction of the Supreme Court, then we'll have the case heard by the Supreme Court, and we're perfectly fine with that. We're perfectly fine having them involved in this case, if they want to spend their time doing that. But practically, they failed to meet the allegations, or they failed to meet the elements that were required to meet to trigger the Supreme Court's jurisdiction. So we think, at the end of the day, it's ultimately not going to be granted. The Treasurer's not without relief there. He can always file a lawsuit in a lower court at that time if he has any issues. So that, in a nutshell, as quick as I can possibly do it here with what is a very complex subject, is the status of this case.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that update. Next, we have Mr. David Tetter, proclamation of the 2024 Gullah Geechee Nation Appreciation Week of July 27, 2024 to August 4, 2024. Queen Quip.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Members of Council, Members of the public. I have Queen Quip back there. We do this on an annual basis. I'm going to read the proclamation, so those of you who may not know what this is about can understand it.
Queen, you don't come on up front?
This is a proclamation to designate the week of July 27, 2024 through August 4, 2024 as Gullah Geechee Nation Appreciation Week. Come on, Miss Queen. I've known this lady for, what, 20, 30 years now?
Oh, 50 years.
My hair's burning. Whereas Jasper County is one of the most historic and country counties in South Carolina, and in the 18th century, this area of the South Carolina coast became the locale of some of the richest licensed farming foundations itself, which were rich, specific West African ethnic groups who became known as the Gullah Geechee. Whereas the Gullah Geechee has central civilization originated in West Africa, its people come to the United States, who had been kidnapped, enslaved in the United States, who worked on these foundations in the coast of Georgia, including South Carolina. With their African fair, original language, and grass, the Gullah Geechee people left in Oregon, South Carolina. Whereas the Gullah Geechee culture has had a powerful linguistic relationship with South Carolina, including Jasper County, these Gullah Geechee influences have helped us to become a southernized white family. Whereas John Maxey served Jasper County and South Carolina House Representatives from 1878 to 1874, before 1827, here, emerged in the sculpture community and along the lands which she made many people in this city. Whereas the preservation and celebration of the Gullah Geechee culture came momentum due to the Gullah Geechee Cultural Heritage Act, created by the United States Representative James Hyder, as well as the efforts of others such as Queen Quip, the Gullah Geechee Nation, and Homishaw, who founded the Gullah Geechee Nation International Music Movement Festival. Whereas the Gullah Geechee Sustainability Plan has been created to sustain the land and the Gullah Geechee culture. Whereas Queen Quip, who became the first Gullah Geechee to speak before the United Nations on behalf of Gullah Geechees, led the creation of this plan and the forming of that. Whereas it's appropriate to recognize the importance of bringing awareness and appreciation to the Gullah Geechee culture and history and the Lord's understanding of all the contributions of Gullah Geechee and within our area. Whereas a series of activities will take place throughout Jasper County and virtually throughout the industry legacy of the Gullah Geechee Nation, partly the United Nations Declaration of People of African descent. Whereas Jasper County joins in celebrating the lives of Gullah Geechees who have left such a rich legacy on our country, county, and nation. Joining with the theme of this year's celebration is?
Why not? You know, this is a worship, but no.
Gullah Geechee Tickets Stand in the U-Lin Bay.
Thank you.
About probably the week of July 27, 24 through August 4, 24, is Gullah Geechee Nation Appreciation Week in Jasper County, and encourage all citizens to actively participate in educational activities and increasing both knowledge and appreciation of this Gullah Geechee culture. That is 15-page log, and great, Jasper County, South Carolina.
Thank you. Yeah. I'm more welcome now. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you, ma'am. You don't let him take your seat there?
Yeah, he got my seat.
Okay. But you still did up there. So glad to see you. So glad to see everybody with D., glad to see back in Jasper County one more again and things like that, and for yeti, all will be the Guinean. I thought y'all bring the whole crowd for greet me this year. I appreciate y'all.
Everybody's here to see you, Queen.
Thank you, thank you. I'm glad to see all the honey chilling, and so glad that one more again this year. And so glad that one more again this year, yeah, y'all know we've been to one county, well, some of y'all may don't know this year. We've been to one county way back of y'all, and been in a little separate Jasper from Beaufort County.
That's right.
So I still live across a few creek and thing like that on Centel Nala, in Beaufort County, but I so glad for there. And we want to launch Gullaguchi Nation Appreciation Week on Centel Nala again this year. Plenty of hundred children, and y'all raise your hand if you know at Penn School there. Raise your hand if you know ever been to Penn School. Okay, see, some of y'all know we a hundred and fifty years too, like a, like a David. So that's what we could do. Noon on Saturday, July twenty-seventh, come early. Ain't gonna be my fault, you get there late, and ain't nothing for none pun, that ain't in my business, okay? Because you got to have plenty good food for none pun, plenty good music, put on your dancing shoe, and make sure you come with your hat and thing, because it probably going to be hot, okay? So definitely come to join me. So all the hundred children who never yet we to cry, we to eat like this year, for all of you new folks that are here in South Carolina, in Jasper County, we can speak this language too. And so definitely, we invite everyone to come over and join us Saturday, July twenty-seventh, from noon to three. It never ends at three, nobody wants to go home, but that's the official time at Penn Center on Historic St. Helena Island. So it's going to be a great time. And I'm going to leave some of these, should I pass them to you for them? Pass them to you for them, all right? And so I'm going to leave some of these so that the council members can definitely have them, and I'll leave some more out there for the public to have. But we would love for everyone over here to come on back, and let's put our counties back together again, celebrating all of our culture and our community. Thank you all once again.
Thank you, thank you. Next, we have Lisa Wagner, consideration of first reading of an ordinance to amend Jasper County zoning ordinance, Article Five, zoning district regulations, to add two new primary zoning districts, rural preservation, RP ten, and village commercial, one new overlay district, U-Haul Creek Cultural Heritage Overlay District, Article Six, use regulations to add uses for the RP ten and VC zoning districts. Ms. Wagner.
Good evening, Chairman and council members. As part of the five-year review and update of the Jasper County Comprehensive Plan, Jasper County Council enacted a moratorium last May in the U-Haul Broad River Planning Area to temporarily, temporarily halt major residential subdivisions and commercial developments to allow time to review and update county zoning standards and land use regulations, particularly as they pertain to the U-Haul Broad River Planning Area, with the goal of adopting any new regulations prior to the end of the moratorium. Several community meetings, as well as stakeholder meetings, have been held over the past year. The public's input from those meetings were presented to the Planning Commission at their June fourth workshop, and the Planning Commission reviewed the proposed zoning tax amendments and zoning map amendments at their June twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four special call meeting. As you know, the ordinance in itself is very long, and it's a lot of information in, in these ordinances. In your package, I provided the proposed ordinance along with a red line of Article Five, Article Six, Article Seven, Article Eight, and Article Eleven, as those are all the articles of the zoning ordinance that we're recommending zoning tax amendments to, as well as some maps for the, what we're going to call the U-Haul Okadee Cultural Heritage Overlay District.
That's a mouthful.
Yeah, where we're proposing map changes. With us tonight is Denise Grabowski with Symbiosity. She has a brief presentation to go through with you, if you'll allow that, to give you an update or of these changes. But we can go as deep as you want us to. Again, that's a lot of information.
Obviously, be, give a good information, I will say, because I know there's community members here that I've had conversations with, as this topic. A broad brush cannot paint the same picture. There's some people that have questions. We're going to have three readings, public hearings, and we'll probably have some workshops in between to allow for everybody to ask questions, get specific on their, their personal properties that they own, and what effects this would have on that going forward, to make sure that we're trying to do all we can to accomplish all of our goals. So this will be a process, and one that we invite everybody to participate in, ask questions, get feedback, and make sure that we're trying to do everything we can to be conservation-minded and also sensitive to property owners' rights as well, so. Ms. Grabowski.
Good evening, Chairman and members of council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. As Ms. Wagner presented, this is a culmination of community meetings that we have held since last fall, along with workshops. We've been here before you as well, to bring forward recommendations for modifications to your land development code to help to implement some of what has been envisioned in your comprehensive plan, and more specifically builds upon the work of, that builds upon the work of the Broad River Task Force. I'm going to hit the high points, and ask very high, and as you said, Chairman, happy to go into any level of detail you want tonight, or wait for subsequent meetings and workshops to do that. So this is a summary of the proposed updates. As you can see, there are four articles that are involved in the proposed updates. In particular, Article Five, which includes the introduction of two new base zoning districts, as well as the introduction of a new overlay district, those are the primary overarching changes. The changes in the other articles, six, seven, and eight, specify some of the details of those major changes in more detail. I will point out, in Article Seven, we do also have some proposed modifications that we are recommending to some of the development standards and riparian buffers consistent with the goals of this planning process. The first new district is the RP ten Rural Preservation District, and the intent of this, as you can see, is to preserve, sustain, and protect from suburban encroachment rural areas and resources, particularly forest and agricultural, and maintain a balanced rural-urban environment. Very high level, again, in general, the Rural Preservation Ten District is very similar to your existing Rural Preservation District with the modification of the minimum lot size. In this new district, the proposed minimum lot size would be ten acres. We are looking at developing an open space subdivision alternative that would allow for some modification of that minimum lot size, but maintain the same overall density. The next proposed zoning district, again, this would be a new district, is the Village Commercial District. And this one is really intended to honor and protect the small businesses that provide localized services primarily to communities throughout the county. We're starting, of course, in the U-Haul Overlay District. But these would be small commercial establishments that would be fitting in character and design with what is historically appropriate in Jasper County, and be limited in size so that you don't end up with commercial development that's out of scale with the surrounding area. The next is the U-Haul Okadee Heritage Overlay District, and yes, it is a mouthful. But this is an overlay district that, as you know, the base zoning district is here, and the overlay district sits on top. So the districts of the overlay district may be different than what's in the base district, but the district overlay standards would be what would be in place for properties in this area. In this particular overlay district, we are looking to really put the commercial development in the crossroad areas, which is, which is the way that commercial developments have developed over time in rural communities. It ties residential zoning to the transition zones that are identified in your comprehensive plan. So the residential zoning would be in the areas that are in the unincorporated county, but close in proximity to the municipalities. This area, the overlay district, would also increase the riparian buffer and subject take standards. This is largely a strategies to be able to protect and maintain high water quality, and we are also looking in this district to increase stormwater management standards, again, with the idea of protecting water quality, which of course feeds into the overall health and well-being of the ecosystem and the environment and your natural resources. That is a very high-level overview of the recommendations, and I'm happy to answer any questions or go into any more detail as you see fit.
Ms. Clark, did you have any questions?
No.
Mr. Allen?
Just a statement, I do think that as we kind of hear the high level over tonight, I think we do need to enter into some workshops between some of the other readings to make sure we're taking consideration some of our lifelong landowners and some of their needs with their smaller lots and areas as well.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. Mr. Kemp?
No.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I might add one, just to make certain. With the moratorium ending on July thirty-first, one of the effects of this is it invokes the pending ordinance doctrine moving forward. So the moratorium doesn't end, it is, it ends, but it's converted into, you're subject to potentially having to use these new standards in any application from first reading forward.
Do we need to extend the moratorium?
No, so the pending ordinance doctrine kind of doesn't, allows people to do some planning at their risk using these standards as they move forward. They can't use the old standards, they cannot rely on the.
So practically, you would make a motion to approve it for first reading invoking the application of pending ordinance doctrine.
Which is in the title.
Yes.
It's time we call for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the first reading of the Article Five zoning district regulations.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ms. Wagner?
I just want to also let you know that my department, we're going to work very hard this week to get these red line versions, Article Five, Six, Seven, Eight, and Eleven, which are the zoning tax amendments we're proposing, on our website, on the planning and building page, there's a link to comprehensive plan update, and we'll have these loaded to that website this week so that the citizens and general public can go there and look in more detail to what's being proposed.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner.
Next, Mr. Andrew Fulgham, continuation of public hearing, consideration of second reading of ordinance zero dash twenty-two four dash one-six, to levy and impose a one percent sales tax and use tax, subject to a referendum within Jasper County pursuant to section four dash thirty-seven dash thirty of the Code of Laws of South Carolina nineteen seventy-six.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, thank you. Ordinance twenty-two-four dash sixteen proposes to do that. The last time you saw this was at a workshop on July the second. You started a public hearing on June the twenty-fourth and continued that until this evening. So ultimately, in the end, respectfully, we're going to request your consideration of second reading of this ordinance after the benefit of that continued public hearing. But I thought I could just summarize real quickly, since July two, you had a meeting with both municipalities, went through all the projects, what changes have been made. In your packages were included a clean version and also a red line version. I hope you appreciate the red line version as much as I do. It showed all the changes that you, you made, and my consensus with the other jurisdictions on July the second. That specifically was to establish the four-hundred-and-seventy-million-dollar maximum amount of proceeds to be collected. You matched the projects, road projects, to the four-hundred-and-seventy-million-dollar amount, going from twenty-six road projects and six-hundred-and-fifty-two million to sixteen road projects and three-hundred-and-seventy-six million, which was eighty percent of the total amount, twenty percent going for green belt initiatives, of that being ninety-four million. You agreed to an estimated principal amount for the authorization of bonds to be issued, not to exceed one-hundred-and-fifty million, established the fifteen-year term, and you clearly defined the valid language with regard to green belt projects. You also established and perfected, I think, on the second, the language defining an advisory committee for the effort. So we're happy to answer any questions that you have, but ultimately, we're respectfully requesting that you consider second reading after the benefit of the public hearing.
It's time we open the floor for a public hearing. Anybody wishing to address councils that raises a specific topic, please feel free to do so at this time. Public hearing going twice, public hearing going three times, public hearing is now closed. Any questions from council, Ms. Clark?
None.
Mr. Allen?
Just one thing, the committee is comprised of the chairman, mayors, or their designated and someone from the school board, correct?
Correct. I believe that's what.
Yes, sir. Or they could delegate it to another elected official.
No, thank you. We do have a list, we had a joint meeting with the city of Hardyville and the town originally, I see the mayors here, met for a couple of hours to go over a list of concerns as far as specific roads. We call it the triangle, right here. But this is an opportunity for the public to, and there'll be a lot of information coming out, we'll provide that list of roads, but this is a referendum for the citizens to consider to allow funds so that we can actually get some roads reworked, repaged. Because of our infrastructure is severely deficient, to make a long story short, I did speak with one of the DOT engineers today, trying to get a start date from the contractor for four-sixty-two, which is going to start at Old House and the Rusty Cooler Store, and go out past Snake Road. We do know the completion date is supposedly in November. There's also another contract up near, I believe it was Gillison Branch Road as well, and that's supposed to be completed around that same timeline, so I'm still waiting on the DOT engineer to call me back. He was supposed to call the contractor to try to get somewhat of an approximate start date for this project. So we are standing on top of him. I urge you to speak with your delegation to make sure that we're getting all the funding we can for our road system. We have terrible roads in Jasper County. I would think that our delegation would be helping us, because you can't get into Beaufort County without coming through Jasper County. So we need all the help we can get, your phone calls and letters to be able to make a huge difference, so thank you for that. Okay, we call for a motion for approval.
I make a motion that item R fourteen be approved.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Next, we have David Tetter, consideration of first reading of an ordinance authorizing the sale to South Carolina Grays LLC for a one-point-four-seven acre parcel being subdivided out of the original, two-hundred-and-fifty-eight-point-four-five acre parcel B, parcel B being shown on a plat recorded on plat book twenty-two, page two-thirty-three, with such one-point-four-seven acre parcel being shown on an individual plat being a portion of tax parcel zero-four-eight dash zero-zero dash zero-one dash zero-zero-nine, and authorized Jasper County Administrator to execute such contracts and endless deeds or other documents as may be necessary and appropriate to effect the sale to South Carolina Grays LLC, ordinance assigns, and matters related thereto.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. This is, I think, the third time we've brought this to you. The first was to approve a letter of intent. The second time was to ratify a purchase and sale agreement in South Carolina. When a local government sells property, it must be done by ordinance. The last resolution passed authorized me and the administrator to prepare a purchase and sale agreement, which has, was approved, and bring an ordinance back before the council. This is the ordinance, this is selling a small piece of property adjacent to land already owned by SC Gray. And so we've looked at it before, and it's been approved, so we'd ask you to approve this at first reading. We'll have a public hearing in August, and final reading after that. They are proceeding at a pace with due diligence out there, and look forward to getting this closed as quickly as we can. Not a good picture, but that's the area of the transfer. Cypress Ridge, apologize, when you scan in color, everything turns dark.
Any questions from council, Ms. Clark?
None.
Mr. Allen?
Questions?
Mr. Kemp?
No questions.
It's time we call for a motion for approval, please.
I make a motion that the, this be the first reading. Is this number fifteen?
Yes, ma'am.
This be the first reading of an ordinance authorizing the sale of South Carolina Grays LLC.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Next, Mr. David Tetter, consideration of first Next, Mr. David Tetter, consideration of first reading of an ordinance by title only amending Jasper County ordinance zero dash two zero two-three dash two-zero by authorizing and approving modified terms of a loan from the South Carolina Transportation Infrastructure Bank, authorizing and approving documents to reflect the modified loan, authorizing and approving modifications to an intergovernmental agreement among Jasper County SC, the city of Hardyville SC, and the South Carolina Transportation Infrastructure Bank and other matters related.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, as you know, for many, many years now, we've been working with Hardyville and others at exit three to get a loan and grant money from the South Carolina Transportation Infrastructure Board to add in a new exit that's a widen I-95 with the passage of times and trying to get documents all signed up. They've now gotten new bid proposals on estimates and more money is needed. Back in February, we passed an ordinance that provided for the county administrator and the county council chairman to be able to sign documents that were substantially in the form that were attached to that ordinance. Latest information indicates we're going to have to make some changes to those that the council will have to approve, so this is setting us up to be able to approve those changes in dollar figures as the council may choose to do. There are meetings next week and the week after that. We have a deadline with the Department of Transportation in order to reach certain benchmarks and commitments to keep the funding going. We are doing what we need to do in conjunction with the others, but we cannot, we won't be able to give you the final numbers until after some meetings next week. We have a September deadline to get this in there, so we're having first reading by title only, recognizing what you're going to be considering a second reading will have more detail on the actual figures. In general, they're asking the developer with the city of Hardyville and the county are looking that we're going to extend the term of the loan, which is fifteen years, to get a larger amount of money in a loan as necessary, what we pay for by tax increment finance revenue of a district that's been created by the city of Hardyville in the exit three Riverport area. So in general, that's what we're doing. More detail to come. Mr. Fulgham, we're meeting with the leadership team next week, and we hope to have more defined actual numbers thereafter.
Mr. Tetter, I believe, just to, you correct me if I'm wrong, but the county agreed to allocate thirteen point four million in cash, so that we would not borrow twenty-eight million. I think we agreed to up to eighteen million.
Yes, sir.
They got a twenty-eight million dollar grant, and now again, the cost estimates have gone through the roof, so now they're wanting to borrow the full twenty-eight million, and now we got a pretty significant shortfall as well.
Right.
And we're under a timeline to be completed by September first, as well as the federal DOT guys and the state DOT guys have put us under the gun on a timeline to have these deliverables.
That's correct, sir. When we approved this back in February, we approved, as you said, taking down part of the twenty-eight million dollar loan to a point, agreeing to consider giving out more if a certain loan coverage, debt coverage was met, which is trying to demonstrate, they can so far demonstrate that with the extension of the loan, but there's still going to be a multi-thirty-something million dollar shortfall at this point that we've identified that the developer and the STIB board are going to have to address and how it's coming in because the county has basically said the well is dry.
The well is dry.
Because we put the thirteen point five million out of the transportation sales tax into it.
Any questions, Mr. Kemp?
No.
Ms. Ralston, Ms. Clark?
No.
Time we call for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that this be the consideration of the first reading of an ordinance by title only amending Jasper County ordinance zero dash two zero two-three dash twenty by authorizing and approving modified terms of a loan from South Carolina Transportation Infrastructure Bank.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Next, Ms. Lisa Wagner, consideration of the third reading and a second public hearing, ordinance zero dash twenty twenty-four dash fifteen to amend ordinance number zero dash twenty twenty-two dash sixteen to adopt updated standards for the planned development district encompassing a thirty-eight point eight-four acre parcel located on US Highway two seventy-eight. Ms. Wagner?
Hi, this is a proposed amendment to the CSP PDD and the development agreement. The project, when it was first approved as a PDD, it was a for rent, single-family for rent community on one parcel of land. This amendment would allow the developer to have the option, under the PDD amendment, would give him the option to have subdivided parcels and not only for rent, but they could also be for sale. So we've had two other readings. We're required to have a public hearing, a second public hearing on the development agreements. That's been properly advertised, it's before you tonight. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions, Ms. Clark?
No.
Ms. Ralston?
Not really a question, but more of a statement. This was, this is already approved project, correct?
Yes.
And my subdivision, this is corporate doing tonight, great individual lots, correct?
Well, tonight, we're, we were only changing the standards in the PDD. If they decide to subdivide the parcels, they'll have to come in with an application, go before the planning commission for that preliminary plat and final plat approval. It doesn't come back to the county, but what we're asking you tonight is to change the standards that are already adopted in the PDD to allow for these changes if they choose this in the future.
Mr. Kemp, any questions?
No.
Okay, at this time, I'll open the floor for a public hearing. Anybody wishing to address council at this time for this specific topic, please feel free to do so. Public hearing going twice, public hearing going three times, public hearing is now closed. It's time we call for a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that this be the consideration of the third reading and the second public hearing, ordinance zero dash two zero two-four dash fifteen to amend ordinance number zero dash two zero two-two one sixteen to adopt updated standards for the planned development district encompassing a thirty-eight point eighty-four acre parcel located on Highway two seventy-eight.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Motion carries, thank you. Next, we have open floor to the public. Mr. Wanda?
You have amended the agenda to pick up the consent items and pardon the action items that were removed.
Okay.
We'll be taking up?
Twenty-one.
Item twenty-one.
Before we do public comment?
Keeping up with the action items. It's your call.
Let's go ahead and do public comment so that everybody doesn't have to stay around if they don't want to.
Protocols for public comment, thirty minutes are allocated for public comment and each speaker is allotted three minutes. Speakers may not donate, transfer, yield, or give any of their speaking time to another person. Speakers must sign in on an agenda list maintained by the clerk to council prior to each meeting and include their name, address, and include the subject and purpose for which they seek to address the council. All public comments shall be directed to the county council as a whole and not to omit any member thereof. Speakers should, shall confine their comments under the jurisdiction of the county and shall not use public comment period to promote or advertise awards, businesses, services, or candidates for public office. Council does not take action based on public comments at the meeting, as council does not take action on items not on the agenda. The chairman may direct the speaker to contact the administrator to give or receive additional information. All speakers must, shall be mindful and respectful of those participating or present at the meeting. Speakers are to be civil and their language shall refrain from comment or behavior that includes name-calling, personal attacks, threats, obscene language, and/or disruptive actions.
It's time we have Mr. Philip Malthus, senior, on the land ordinance. Welcome, Mr. Malthus.
How are you? Good, thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, my remarks have to do with the new zone, the land ordinance, the RP ten zone, if you want to call it that. My name is Philip Malthus. My wife and I own over two hundred and fifty acres of land on the Boyd Creek side of Knos Island Road. I was born and grew up in this country, in this county, and first of all, we were never notified, nor did we agree that our land, that's been in our family for over fifty years, be placed in a preservation zone or anything else. So we're in catch-up mode because we just found out a few days ago what was taking place. I didn't realize that the Chelsea movement had anything to do with our particular property, but all of our property is in the RP ten zone. We've never expressed any desire to develop this land, and it has already always been preserved by our family. We now have a tree farm there where my father used to grow crops. To now tell us that we are required to sell or give a ten acre lot to our children instead of a one acre lot, we feel is a violation of our personal freedoms. And you don't want to just restrict the amount of acres, but you also want to restrict the size of the lots, as far as width and so forth. Transferring ten acres of agricultural land to residential for a single. And frankly speaking, seems to me that's a conflict of interests. My father would turn over in his grave if he knew that y'all were trying to dictate how his land, our land, that he worked day and night for, could be divided by the provisions of a planning commission instead of by discretion of the heirs. This is not what he worked for and not what we strive to preserve all these years. No, we're not interested in, we're not interested in land development, we're not interested in any types of housing, but we are interested in housing for our own family. Who are you to tell us that we can't deed an acre of land to close families for a parcel of wealth, a property we've had for fifty-some odd years? Restrictions you're trying to impose on landowners in the RP ten zone to us are not only unreasonable and unfair, but an infringement on our rights as Americans and property owners. Just how many of you folks in this council, think about it, how many of you in this council had to purchase a ten acre plot to build a house?
I'm sorry, your three minutes have expired. Thank you.
Mr. Philip, thank you. We have workshops and opportunities.
Please consider this before you.
Yes, sir.
Make that final decision.
Next, we have Philip Malthus, junior. Philip Malthus, senior son.
Hi, councilor. Thank you very much for your time.
Yes, sir.
What we're seeing here is people that feel threatened by what they've always known, and, you know, we're not wanting to develop our land and abuse that land. We're asking for your protection. We don't feel like we have a voice in this at all. We've had our privately owned land dedicated as inaccessible to us, in a way, going forward by these restrictions. By dictating what is allowed on our private property, we feel that is very un-American. And I understand that the proposals may be based on really good intentions, to protect our natural resources and our way of life, to prevent the abuse of overdevelopment, things of that nature, but good intentions sometimes lead to bad consequences, and we feel threatened from that. I don't know if anybody wants to see the county overdeveloped or strained to where it cannot be. Take care of this population growth, but from a family that has owned and paid taxes on land in this new proposed zone for over fifty years, we're asking for your protection for our future, our future families dwelling. So quickly, my story, my granddaddy dreamed about me being able to build on his land growing up, and, you know, if these proposed changes were to go into effect, that may not have happened. This would have happened five years ago. And so I'm very trying to hold it together, but what about my brother-in-law and my sister that want to build? This is very moving and very, very tough for me to talk about, but in this proposed situation, we would have to have a ten acre lot. We're using one point three-five acres right now. That would be a waste if we're eight and a half acres under these proposed regulations, and the tax bill will be enormous. It's twenty-three hundred dollars right now for an acre and a third for property tax, not counting personal vehicles or marine life vehicles. This is just, it's attacking in a way, may not be, but it's attacking in a way lower than middle income families if this goes forward. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Philip. John, is it Ragnon? I'm sorry, I can't.
Yeah, right.
John.
Thank you, council. You ready?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'm John Ragnon, I'm vice president and CFO of Lot and Book Holdings, and I'm here, I just want to make sure that y'all received the letter from Lori Blackman, our representative, that she sent over to y'all concerning our property. We own the property on the corner of Bowlin Hall and four sixty-two, and we bought it in good faith, we feel, and we did our due diligence beforehand. We bought it as community commercial shortly thereafter the, you know, moratorium was put into effect and put us on hold. We've already expended about three hundred and, over three hundred thousand dollars on a one point three million dollar project that we have to ball rolling on, and we feel like that we would be a good representative for Jasper County, but just not a good representative with a twenty-five hundred square foot facility. The plan we have is for a ninety-six hundred square foot facility, and we feel like that, you know, we would be a good representative of the county, and we hope that you can take our letter and consider race and work with us any way that you can.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Mr. Scott Yancy. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity tonight to address y'all. I am a resident of the county, but I'm also an audit partner and an accounting firm. I want to use this time to discuss what I've seen in the newspaper about the troubles that the treasurer's offices have had relative to his day-to-day bookkeeping functions, which have been very concerned about. Further, the special counsel meeting in May raised a number of questions about the ability of the treasurer's office to conduct a course, to correct its course to get back to a position of timely completing its monthly accounting processes. What I would have expected to hear today from the treasurer is a point-by-point discussion about the progress he's made in rectifying the findings in the agreed-on procedures report presented in that meeting. I realize that he inherited a situation where there was nothing but new employees and a lack of documentation around policies and procedures, but I would have thought between the two sets of accounting firms that have been employed, that there's been some substantial progress made in remediating internal control problems now. What's most disturbing is the amount of money that has been spent to even figure out what the problems are. It seems to me that the treasurer has no real clue on how to dig himself out of this hole. Did he even try to contact the county's audit firm, for instance, for their input about what documentation they might have? If he had, he'd taken, had he taken the time to read the ACFR audit, and he didn't know that he had some level of understanding of what internal controls might be. What, what level of coordination did he have with the county's administrative offices, administrator's office, and the controller? Clearly, they understand good internal control over financial reporting and how to process accounting transactions. To make matters worse, the treasurer is now suing the county to obtain control of. To make matters worse, the treasurer is now suing the county to obtain control over cash receipts for all county departments. I don't, I don't understand how that even makes any sense. If he can't get his own department in order, why shouldn't he be entrusted with the other department's accounting? Before the merits of this really can even be contemplated, I would think that the treasurer, at a minimum, should provide an answer, or at least a detailed project plan, on how he intends to address the following items from the agreed-upon procedures report. Findings 2, 4, 5, and 11, which is what would be his plan for bringing all of the bank reconciliations and other reconciliations current. Are they current now? I didn't hear anything about that tonight. Finding 6, developing a process for coding receipts timely. I didn't hear anything about that tonight, now. Finding 9, developing a written policies and procedures memorandum so that it doesn't get into this problem again. Time is wasting to complete the 2024 audit, where the auditor is probably already needing to plan their audit work and complete some level of interim testing. In my experience, companies who are in this situation and don't have a definitive work plan end up missing deadlines, which in this case will spook people like the county's bond holders. Thank you again for allowing me to speak tonight, and I look forward to hearing about the treasurer's progress.
Thank you, sir. Tony.
Chrisell.
Thank you, Mr. Tony. Welcome.
I reside at 216 Full Sweet Beast, and I'm a supporter of our elected treasurer, Mike Skinner. You have chosen to withhold bank account information and access from our treasurer. These accounts are funded by monies collected from Jasper County taxpayers. Apparently, you believe that it's fine to keep accounts hidden from the treasurer that we elected. I, and many others, don't agree. The Post-Currier and Island Packet submitted a Freedom of Information request and stated that approximately 100 accounts are being concealed from our elected treasurer. Is anyone associated with the council caring for those funds? Are you searching for the best interest rates available for all those accounts, similar to how our elected treasurer does? I doubt it, because most of the accounts that Mike Skinner has access to were gaining almost no interest. Mike Skinner corrected that problem without your input. Good job, Mr. Skinner. Within the Freedom of Information Act request, the Bank of the Low Country, a Communicorn subsidiary, has 44 of these concealed accounts. We all know that banks make money by charging high interest rates while paying out low ones. I wanted to know what made this bank so special that we would believe what I believe to be our 44 unchecked accounts? I came across a picture on the internet of the Bank of the Low Country Board of Directors, and standing in front of the newly-opened branch was a council member. The picture was included as a member of the Board of Directors. I wasn't sure if the picture was accurate, because you can't always believe your eyes. So, I started looking for more information. I looked at the State Ethics Commission report that are filed for 2024 and earlier years, but in those reports, no one stated any associations or benefits received from the Bank of the Low Country or Communicorn. The bank's Federal Reserve Annual Report Form FRY-6 showed something different. They listed a council member as a director and shareholder. So, I'm confused. A council member is a shareholder and Board of Director member. Aren't you required to state that on your SEI form, Statement of Economic Interest? Is it not true that this could be seen as a conflict of interest, which also must be reported? I am sure there could be logical reasons to explain what I perceive as irregularities, and I implore you to take some time to think about these concerns and report back to us at the next meeting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Tony. Next, we have Ms. Valerie Guzman.
Hello. I'm Valerie Guzman, private citizen, and I live at 53 Needleburgs Lane in Hardyville. Good evening, Chairman Salz, County Council, and ladies and gentlemen. I'm sure you're aware, a fundraiser has been set up by a group of citizens. It is an embarrassment that citizens are banding together to support the treasurer they elected. I would like the county to explain why taxpayer funds are being expended in this lawsuit. Using our tax monies to countersue the treasurer is equivalent to suing the taxpayers of this county, is it not? The deep pockets of the county funded by the taxpayers is being used to countersue a man who is trying to do his job. There is something distasteful in this invidious action. At the end of the day, it's the lawyers who are benefiting. The fallout from all of this could be the defeat of the penny tax in the upcoming transportation referendum on which many of you have dedicated a lot of hard work. Folks are already saying they would not support it because the county's integrity is suspect. One has to be quite obtuse to be unable to connect the reactions of people with what is going on between the treasurer's office and the county. Please mediate and solve this issue. There is a $10 donation in that GoFundMe account, and that donation spoke volumes of how important this issue must be to that individual, and it stands in complete repudiation of the county's current actions. If this referendum fails in November, that blame falls squarely on the county. Look at the bigger picture. Some of the council may lose their seats in November, and in your legacy will be the reason why the referendum failed. Is this what you want? Please bring this lawsuit to a rapid resolution. One more thing, the gentleman from Parker Poe said something about Mr. Skinner using the decal fund to pay bonuses to himself and his staff. I just want to know, how many of the elected officers have used their funds to pay for bonuses, consultation fees, et cetera? Could it be that he followed precedent? Thank you.
Mr. Grant McClure.
Hello, my name is Grant McClure. I work for the Coastal Conservation League, and I would like to comment on the rezoning in the U-Haw district to the U-Haw Cultural Overlay District, and the, comment specifically on the application of the RP-10 zoning and the village commercial zoning within that new district. I did want to first address a concern that was brought up earlier about families not being able to create smaller lot sizes on their properties. There is an exemption that is written into the Jasper County Code called the Family Estate Density Exemption. It's Section 11, 7.3, and our recommendation would be to incorporate that family estate allowance into the U-Haw district to allow for that traditional family settlement pattern and allow for, you know, folks to have their families basically, you know, have higher densities on their properties if it's for a family member. I did want to say that we're very supportive of the creation of this district, and we want to commend the council for listening to concerned citizens over the past, really about two and a half years now, and taking proactive measures to safeguard the sensitive landscape along the Broad River. And this work is especially timely with the moratorium set to expire on July 31st. And so, having strong standards in place now is absolutely key, because developers will turn their attention back towards that district as the moratorium is going to expire soon. And lastly, just wanted to say that marinas and, as well as golf courses are both allowed, and our recommendation would be to make golf courses a conditional use and to remove marinas as an allowed use within the U-Haw district. In the spirit of creating a district that's designed to protect the environment and quality of life, we don't feel that those uses are necessarily, not always compatible with the purpose and intent of the district. So, thank you very much for your time and consideration, and I look forward to continuing this conversation. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lyons Pink.
Thank you, Council. Appreciate you all having us out tonight. I'm not familiar with all of the process, and so, signing up to talk tonight, I was not prepared to make any remarks, but I'd like to make a couple of comments. Sounds like you got some pretty complex issues to discuss in the county, so I'm going to add mine to that. And having property on 462 and adjacent to Aqua Wood Pools, we were asking through our letter that we sent recently to you guys as well, to consider our need to have specific use on commercial uses for square footage and for construction purposes as well, because that's the business we're in, residential construction and such. So, we would ask you to, in this process, as you go forward, to consider individual needs in that regard for land use. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Peggy Callahan.
My name is Peggy Callahan. I live at 762 Margarita Avenue, Avenue South in Hardyville since August of 2020. Under the Freedom of Information Act, I respectfully request to receive answers to our questions by August 19th at the next council meeting, please. Per county ordinance, Section 266, disposition of fees, all such funds generally from fees collected and monies received by the county departments, employees, and/or elected officials shall be memorialized, and appropriate accounting methods for the purpose of audit, and all such funds shall be timely deposited with the county treasurer's office. Nowhere in there does it state any exceptions to this ordinance. Why do we let this, why do we let this nonsense subside and allow Mr. Skinner, the duly-elected treasurer, to have access to the accounts as per the ordinance, so he can do his job? Not necessarily signatory rights. He never asked for that. I believe that the public was misled by Walt Carton's statement that he just wanted access. If it was necessary for him to have signatory, that would be another story, but he only asked for access. We can save our taxpayers an awful lot of money by following a procedure that's already in place. I began wondering if there was a penalty for an ordinance violation, and there is. Under South Carolina Code 1976 S5-7-30, it states the maximum penalty for an ordinance violation is a fine not exceeding $500 or imprisonment not exceeding 30 days or both. By not following our own ordinance, you are noncompliant. Why did it take a writ for this to surface? And why did you choose Parker &amp; Poe for an issue with a very simple solution? We understand you may not discuss the executive sessions, but we would like to understand this motion to hire an outside firm. We have an attorney within the county. Parker &amp; Poe, we would like to know why you chose them, and how much is that costing with reference to the retainer? Because we, the taxpayers, are footing the bill. Let's see. They did not follow the county ordinance and allow Mike, at the very least, to view the 73-plus bank accounts, which does by the above ordinance. Defending them for an ordinance violation seems a bit much, so unless there's something else going on, we would just appreciate answers to this added spending of our money, because we expect you all to be good stewards of our tax money. Thank you.
Lyle Paradise.
I sit too long here. Good evening, audible council members. My name is Lyle Paradise. I'm a taxpayer, reside at 210 Foxborough Court. All comments this evening are my beliefs, opinion, perception. The philosophy of the United States Constitution of 1789, the state of South Carolina Constitution, is the Jasper County government is the servant and not the master of the people. I repeat it. The Jasper County government is the servant and not the master of the people. I'm here this evening to support county treasurer's office and Michael Skinner. In my opinion, Michael Skinner is a hero for being a whistleblower in exposing the Jasper County Council and administration for what I believe is mismanagement. This includes having 116 different bank accounts and failing to give the treasurer access to all of those accounts. Jasper County will be receiving $100 million from the taxpayers in fiscal year 2025, $63 million for operations. My two questions are: Number one, should the taxpayers trust the county to spend any of the funds wisely? Number two, should the taxpayers trust the county to invest any of the funds wisely? The answer is no. The four reasons are: Five years ago, in October 2019, Jasper County Finance Department employee Denise Smith was sent to prison for eight years for embezzling $275,000 of the taxpayers' money. The $275,000 has not been recovered by the county. That's item two. Number three, there are four, at least four people in this room this evening that were employed by the county when the investment took place and are still employed today. Mark Salz, county council, Barbara Clark, county council, Andrew Fulham, county administrator, David Tetter, county attorney. Four, there is no member of the county council, nor the county administrator, that has a formal accounting or financial background. These are the four reasons. So, I respectfully request and expect that by the next, by the next council meeting, August the 19th, you please do the following and explain to the public. Number one, authorize a forensic audit of the county finance department. Number two, establish an audit committee to select a forensic audit firm. The committee will be composed of the county council members and three qualified county taxpayers. One of those taxpayers will be a certified public accountant. The reason is, for the past 17 years, you've used the buried audit group to do your audits. Third thing I ask is allow the treasurer's office to access all county bank accounts. Thank you.
Hello. My name is John Murphy, and I reside at 186 Laurel Oak Avenue in Hardyville. Thank you for allowing me to speak, and without, after these other, the presentation tonight, this is going to be a little bit shorter than I originally thought. The basic point I'm trying to get across is the trust issue that is, is cutting this county apart. I'm really going off track here. The bottom line is, our duly-elected treasurer doesn't have access to all the accounts, and it seems like a very basic question for the taxpayers. Why doesn't he? We still don't have that information. I know it seems like you just took this to the court of public here with Parker Poe's presentation, giving their side of the story, but the taxpayers are still asking the question. It seems incredibly basic for the treasurer to have access to those accounts. So, what is that doing? It's carving a huge trust issue. You're going to be asking for a referendum to collect millions of dollars for their much-needed road improvements. This is not helping your cause at all. The taxpayers are asking you folks to come together, figure it out, meet with Mike, get the lawyers in a room, and get this resolved. And I think, as a previous speaker had already mentioned, Mike is probably going to be flexible. I don't think anyone is saying that he has to have signatory approval on every account. He is looking for oversight of all the accounts. Alleged with this, Mike Skinner has started a movement of concerned taxpayers, so much so, a new coalition has been formed. It's called the 278 Corridor Civic Alliance. These are folks who last year didn't know any of your names, but now they're all watching you. We're watching the meetings online, we're listening to all the comments that are being made, and they want to know what's going on here in Jasper County. So, with that said, this, the 278 CCA has backed the GoFundMe account for Mike Skinner and are looking... for Mike Skinner and are looking for assistance to, at the very least, help resolve this situation. Thank you.
Ms. Libby Pimpa?
That concludes our 30-minute.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have item 21, Rule of Rural Initiative Fund Grant Award Agreement Amendment. Danny Lucas.
All but Chairman, consumers, council members. Back in the year 2021 or near about, Jasper County was one of 14 counties that were judged by the state as being disadvantaged or otherwise problematic. And so the state created the Rural Initiative Grant to provide economic stimulus to these 14 counties. And these 14 counties were encouraged to sift through their needs economically and figure out how they would propose to spend the money that was allocated. And so therefore, it was a $5 million grant with $2.5 million allocated by the State Department of Commerce with 100% matched by, in this case, Jasper County. Same would be for the other 13 counties involved. And so Jasper County chose three projects or some combination of those three projects to spend the $5 million on. And so we were given 18 months. The other ones were given 18 months also. Because of supply chain issues and other circumstances, we, as well as some other ones, have been unable to exhaust the $5 million in 18 months allowed. So in order to speed the process, in order to close this grant out, we have asked the State Department of Commerce to allow an amendment to the grant. And the amendment says simply that the original three projects, which was the construction of the FBO terminal building at the airport, a fuel farm at the airport, and an apron, a parking apron at the airport, be used to expend that total $5 million. And so now we come back with an amendment to not only include that, which was in the original grant request, but to say those three projects are combinations of an associated capital equipment in order to push the money through and to be able to close that grant out in a more timely manner. So now we've been given an additional 18 months should the council choose to amend the grant.
Any questions, Mr. Campbell?
Yes. On the grant, what was the original grant name?
January of 2022.
January of 2022. Did we ever agree to, on the grant, on this amendment, right? It says that we have to complete all the items on the grant.
Within 18 months.
Within 18 months. Anything overrun is our expense. Does that mean we have to, now we have to do that terminal? Our own money?
No, so that's not what it means at all. Let me go back a little bit. We have expended all of the state's $2.5 million on the South Apron expansion. And then we added $330,000 of our $2.5 million to complete the ramp expansion. So now, all the money that is left to be expended come out of Jasper County's $2.5 million of that $5 million total. So I guess to answer your question, it is true that if there are any cost overruns, we will be responsible for those. But it would be unlikely that we'd have a cost overrun because all we're doing is just drawing down the balance.
Right.
And so the equipment that we would spend the money on would be constructed in such a way, not only to address our needs, but also in order to expend the money without going over. But were to somehow go over, we would ask the council for that approval as well as the State Department of Commerce. But we don't plan to do that.
I just don't like the way they read it. It said, "Item needs is all the items." And then we list two items. At least on this other one, was the terminal and the fuel farm.
No, so there were three items.
Well, all I can see is remember is the oil, the terminal and the fuel farm. Now, we were told that the terminal we can't do because it's far above what we thought it was gonna be. We have to complete the whole, everything that was in the plan.
No, so that doesn't have a bearing on this particular grant. So the money that would be left over could be used to construct partially the terminal with the remaining balance to come from some other form. It doesn't say in this grant that we have to build a terminal and then therefore go some other funding mechanism and then go over what the grant allows. The grant allows us to construct one or two or three projects that were outlined in the original grant. That was an apron expansion, a fuel farm, and a terminal building.
Right.
We spent the entire amount of the state's $2.5 million constructing the South Apron expansion. The rest of the money that is to be spent on the county's end, we spent $333,000 or so of that money to fill in the other money that needed to be spent for the apron. Let me go back just a moment.
And how much is the fuel farm?
The fuel farm is $597,000. The original ramp that we built at Terminal North was about $1 million. The new ramp that we opened in April of 2023 was right at $2.8 million. Same dimensions. The only difference is that we retrofitted high-mass lighting for night operations. That was about $340,000.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just one question. Is simplistic, Karen, for you more than us to approve tonight?
To approve the amendment that the State of South Carolina Department of Commerce has already approved. There's asking you, we're asking you to approve it as part two of that amendment because it would take the State Department of Commerce as well as Jasper County to approve the amendment to the Rural Initiative Grant.
No place in there does it say amendment. You read the, maybe I missed it.
This is an amendment.
But it didn't say amendment.
Rural Initiative Fund, South Carolina Department of Commerce, Grant Award Agreement. We ask the Department of Commerce to change the project description in section two to include the original statute and then the addition of associated capital equipment at the original Claudine Airport in Jasper County. That's the only change to the original agreement.
Thank you.
Okay. No further questions, Mr. Lucas. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We have a motion for approval. This time, it's called for a motion for approval, please. We have a second.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Andrew Fulham, approval of independent contract agreement, social media marketing.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, we've had an agreement for the last few years with a firm that has helped us with press releases, social media, et cetera. And that agreement was due to expire on June 30 of this year, so we went ahead and let that expire. There was some discussion at your earlier retreat that you might want to shake things up a little bit, look for a different firm, perhaps, to provide that service for you. We have a firm here that our HR director has met with and recommends, and that firm is Soul Freedom Marketing LLC. And the lady's name there is Ms. Rebecca Welch. And she has presented a marketing proposal for you there. It is slightly cheaper than what we were paying. It is at $1,200 a month. And you'll see the summary of services there, what she would do for us. We were previously paying $1,500 a month for essentially the same services. So it's our recommendation that you consider approving this proposal and authorizing me to negotiate an agreement contract with her to provide those services for the county.
Mr. Fulham, I'd like to ask Councilman Lyle, too, because I know this is something that he had brought up and given that he's a new council member. Maybe we could maybe table that and possibly look at with the council's approval, or look at, or have a better discussion on that and also look and see what items he wanted to incorporate into that and see if that is, in fact, who the council would like to choose.
Sure. And we could, like, meet with her or something.
Make a motion to table and have a conversation about it. Get your input.
I would just like to add one question. In the proposal, she talked about that she would hold us responsible for being injured during the performance of duties, but it's not in the contract. Could you have a whole harmless in that?
Well, you weren't actually supposed to take the contract. It was a draft contract. We would ask you to approve the proposal and authorize staff to negotiate a contract. We can take care of that. Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Any questions?
I make a motion that we table this item until we have further discussion and work session with the county administrator in this room to clarify some of the items.
Do you want to have a workshop? Or would you prefer just to have Councilman Lyle, maybe work with me, to talk with her?
Yeah, that's what we need.
That's fine.
That's fine. Actually, make sure he's comfortable and if there's other consultants that maybe could be considered something.
I think that might be faster if you don't vet that with me. You willing to do that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Danny Lucas, approval of aviation fuel truck proposals.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In our march to making the original Claudine Airport a full-service airport, we now get to the point where we need to procure two fuel trucks. As you know, we have an agreement with a firm. And part of what they do is they lease us the fuel trucks that we're currently using. And of course, we pay lease payments on that on a monthly basis. But at this point, we're bringing forward to you a proposal to select the firm to provide us with two new fuel trucks. And we received proposals from two nationwide companies. And so we brought before you the matrix and the package along with the recommendations from the staff that we request a formal proposal and a purchase agreement from Skymark Refuelers in the proposed amount of $449,000 for a 1,000-gallon aviation gasoline truck and a 3,000-gallon jet fuel truck. These will be on four chassis, both gasoline-powered trucks, F-750 for the 3,000-gallon truck and an F-450 for the 1,000-gallon aviation gasoline fueler. And by the way, we were paid for these two trucks out of the money left over that we just got done talking about with our $2.5 million share of the Rural Initiative Grant.
Just one quick question. Paying attention to some of the commission meetings with the amount of fuel that we're using, is this advantageous for us to purchase these two trucks because of the service demand of jets per day that we're getting?
Yes, sir, it is. First of all, these are new fuel trucks with marches and so forth. The ones that we have now that we have on lease, they're older trucks. The gasoline truck probably is headed toward the replacement of a front main seal. That's not our responsibility. That's the lessors' responsibility. The issue, though, is that we wouldn't have a truck to provide aviation gasoline while that truck is out for service or until they replace that truck with another leased truck.
I attended a commission meeting last week in there, all in favor to purchase the trucks.
Mr. Campbell, any questions?
Yes. Did you do a cost analysis between leasing and buying?
Yes, we did. So in the long term, only if you're leasing a new truck can we make the performance type comparisons between new and new. Right now, we have two used trucks, and we'd be comparing that with two new trucks. It wouldn't be in our best interest to buy used trucks, even if we could find them. But that's what we'd be doing, is comparing used trucks with used trucks and new trucks with new trucks, lease versus purchase.
Well, you, the leased trucks, you're gonna still retain the leased trucks?
No, sir. Once the new trucks arrive, then we turn in the leased trucks.
Do they give us money back because we leased them?
Well, no, sir, they don't give us money back because we had use of the trucks.
I thought that we had use of the trucks because we bought the fuel from them.
The trucks are part of the contract. And so we had the option of buying new trucks from the beginning with whatever period it would take to procure the trucks, or we could lease the trucks directly on day one. And day one would have been back in August of 2022, and then move forward with selling fuel at that point in time. The further we moved back in time forensically, the longer it would have taken to get an order fulfilled because of supply chain issues, employment issues, coming out of COVID, and all that sort of thing. So now we are a bit closer to being able to get back to normal as far as lead time for purchases of capital equipment.
One last question. This, doing business as SkyBlue.
That's Jasper County doing business as SkyBlue Aviation.
How can, but no, we're not registered as SkyBlue.
Yes, we are.
Well, if you go on the state, you look that up, and it's not there.
Yes, sir, it's there.
Are you sure?
Mr. Tetter, did we not register SkyBlue Aviation under the State of South Carolina?
It is trademarked through the State of South Carolina. I filed the trademark myself. And another person tried to usurp the use by filing a SkyBlue LLC. Piled it out there from another state, tried to usurp the name. Did the process get the service part? It's in my office. We have the right to use that name, no one else.
I also have a copy of the documentation. Anything else, Mr. Campbell?
None of that, nothing.
Call for a motion for approval of the aviation fuel truck. We have a second?
Second.
All in favor, put a second five by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Kim Burgess, approval of 57 stone bid.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Jasper County advertised for sealed bids for 3,200 tons of number 57 rock. Three bids were received timely on June 13, 2024. Only one of the bids was compliant with the bid requirements by providing a bid bond. Therefore, the staff is requesting that the council accept the bid of $61.85 per ton for $197,920 from JR Wilson Construction Company Incorporated, contention upon JR Wilson Construction Company providing a performance and payment bond upon execution of the contract. And they have since told me that they will and can provide that performance and payment bond.
Any questions, Ms. Callahan?
Yes.
Just where, what line item is that? Is that the pipe? Is that part of the pipe?
No, this is C-Fund. This is a C-Fund grant.
I know, but you're in your, in your...
It's C-Fund grant.
In the bridges, right. It's C-Fund, that's where the money's coming from.
Right.
But where is it being taken out of?
So it ends up being a part of the, in the grant funds. And then at the end of the year, when the money is expended, it gets the budget revenue.
So it's not in the budget?
No, it's in the grant fund.
Are you sure? Because I was told that that... Because I was told that the Pipe Fund was actually part of this stone.
No, I'm not aware that the Pipe Fund is a part of this, that's something separate. This is to rock the roads.
Why wouldn't we have that in the regular fund?
Because it's part of the grant fund.
I mean, why wouldn't we have that in the regular budget?
It's not in the general fund, it's in the grant fund. And then at the end of the year, when everything's regularized, it moves into the grant fund, but the revenue and the offsetting expense. So it's in the grant fund at this point.
But we... I just, didn't we put that in the revenue, as revenue, though?
Not for the C Fund, I don't think so, no, sir.
No? Okay. I'll take your word. Thank you.
This time, I call for a motion to approval to buy rocks to rock the county's debt roads.
I make approval that we approve number 57 stone bids from J.R. Wilson.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Approval of bids for Levy Fire Station repairs, not to exceed $25,000.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of council. We advertised for sealed bids for the repairs, for certain repairs to Levy Fire Station. The bids are due on June 13th. We received two bids, neither of which were compliant with regard to bid security requirements stated in the invitation to bid. Section 2-423 of the county procurement and contracting ordinance requires bid security when the price is estimated to exceed $100,000 or when circumstances warrant. At the time that the invitation to bid was issued, the cost of repair was unknown and thought to possibly exceed the $100,000 requirement. Therefore, the invitation to bid required the bid bond and also required performance and payment bonds, because we thought it would be greater than $50,000. The condition of the Levy Fire Station warrants passed action, therefore, although the low bidder did not provide bid security, staff recommends that the council accept the low bid not to exceed $25,000. There was a bid of $16,001, and some contingencies of $7,000. Part of it is some roof repairs, so whenever, you know that whenever you remove wood or something, you can find other issues. So that would be the additional $7,000, and waived bid security requirement as well as a performance and payment bond requirement since they don't meet the $50,000. This is a, I have double-checked with this vendor, who is Golden Line Construction. They have provided all of the insurance, the licenses that they're required to have, and it is a woman-owned business, so.
Any questions, Ms. Clark? Mr. Rau?
No, thank you.
This time, we'll call for a motion for approval, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the bids on the Levy Fire Station repairs not to exceed $25,000.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Twenty-six, Kim Burgess, approval authorizing the county administrator to execute contracts included in the adopted 25 budget for the year.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, council. We have, in the procurement, section 2-204 of the contracting and purchasing procurement ordinance, there is a requirement that only the county council has the authority to enter into contracts in excess of $25,000, and all contracts were special services. These contracts don't necessarily meet the special services requirement, but they are in excess of Mr. Fulgham, the county administrator's authority to execute. Therefore, we are requesting that you authorize Mr. Fulgham to execute these contracts, which are already in the budget. They have been budgeted for, but because of the fact that they're greater than his, than the county administrator's authorization level, we are asking that you authorize him to execute these contracts. And there's a list, there's the public, public software contract, which is $335,000 annually, Summit Food Service, which is another $335,000, there's an Assessor Just Appraised for $39,800, Global Connect for $87,550, which is a cybersecurity, cyber security, MC Lawn Care and Maintenance Services for Parks at $48,000, and Motorola Solutions, which is a service agreement for $37,131.
Any questions?
No questions? Yes, the Global Connect, is that just for computers?
No, that's actually for service and plans. That's actually for consultant and also for cybersecurity plans.
Cybersecurity?
Cybersecurity.
That's all. It wasn't mentioned in the budget, it's just line item.
Okay.
Thank you.
This time, we'll call for a motion for approval.
I make a motion that this, it be accepted, that the county administrators to execute the contracts included in the adopted FY 2025 budget not greater than $25,000.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Kim Burgess, approval authorizing the county administrator to execute the MBCon work authorization for the Jasper County courthouse.
Thank you. The Jasper County Clerk of Court has requested renovations to the courthouse. The county reached out to MBCon Construction Company, Inc., under the construction management at risk services contract, in order to provide those renovations. Renovations will be funded through the Title IV Child Support Incentive Fund and have been reviewed by the Office of Child Support Services, which provides the Title IV Child Support Funds, which is a federal program. And so we have a work authorization from MBCon Construction Company, Inc., in the amount of $750,000 that we would like the council's approval so that we can move forward with these requested renovations.
Any questions, Ms. Clark? Mr. Rau? Dr. Kim?
Yes, on the Title IV, that is from the clerk of the court, correct?
That is the clerk of court's funds, yes.
That is a fund that they get, and that, what does, how does that come? Do they apply for the grant, or?
It's a, I'm not exactly sure of how the mechanisms work, but there is federal funds that are provided to the clerk of court. I don't think it's a grant, I think it's a, I don't know how, I don't know. It's not a grant, I can tell you that, so.
Okay. And did we start this already?
We are bidding it as a part of a larger project, Pratt Memorial Library, the Weathersby Building, and then this, so it's in those phases of, we have the bid out there, yes.
Thank you.
This time, we call for a motion for approval, please.
I make a motion to approve the county administrator to execute the MBCon work authorization for the Jasper County courthouse.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Next, we have council member comments.
What do you want to do, A and B?
Oh, approval of minutes, but that was only...
No, A and B, county administrator. You want to do it?
Oh, administrative report, yeah, bouncing around, change that. Sorry about that.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, I know the hour is late, I'll keep it brief. I just had a note on here about moving through some projects here that you'd established at your retreat, and now that we've been through some of these large ones, to include the transportation sales tax, the EEOP, we're ready to move on now to the capital improvement and investment plan and work through those challenges with our facilities and buildings and finance, and how we intend to fix those items. As Ms. Burgess said, we've got three of them underway, and we keep limping along and knocking them out slowly. And then, of course, the new personnel policy or employee handbook, that is in draft form, and we want to schedule some workshops with you to go through that with you. And then, I know it's early, and you're just getting through the moratorium area, but we are excited about moving down to Levy and doing the special area plan in Levy. You know, Levy folks are under some intense development pressure at their doorstep, and so we can go down there and simply do the same thing, do a localized plan with them from a planning perspective, and help them try to identify who they want to be and how they want to grow, and I think that will be very healthy. So that's another big project that's on its way. I did want to mention, the Association of Counties did send out the notification, you may or may not have received it, about the legislative agenda and policies. If you have any legislative policy issues that you'd like to advance to the legislative committee, please let me know. We have a short deadline on Monday, August the 5th, to see if one of those committees might take it up and become a legislative priority with the Association of Counties. Don't have anything else for you, unless, of course, you have any questions to make.
Any questions? Mr. Fulgham?
Mr. Chairman? I do have questions. Two things. Just on one of them, you had down that you were working on some workshops?
Yes, sir.
And I had put an ordinance for the administration, changed some of the administrations, and also there's noise ordinance that's sitting around someplace that was given to the attorney. That doesn't necessarily have to be a workshop, but it can be.
All right, we can perhaps roll that into the introduction of the animal ordinances, too, which is going to be the big heavy lift, I think.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I think we go to 29, approval of minutes. Counselor member comments, Ms. Clark?
Just have a couple of things, and I apologize for us being here this late, because once the minds get tired, you cannot conduct business efficiently. And I apologize to the employees who have to be back here in the morning on the job to keep working. We have the, for the first time in history, I was checking back to see. We want to say congratulations to two Jasper County students. The South Carolina Aviation Association, they do a scholarship fund every year, and this year, two students from Jasper County SA met the requirement, and they were honored with this scholarship. One was from the Jasper County school system down in Hardyville at the high, Senior Junior High School. In his name, I have a problem pronouncing, but it was Oswaldo Twiggo. He won the scholarship, and he will be receiving some money. And the next one was John Gay from Polaris Tech. He won the scholarship, and it was five scholarships giving out, given out, and three of them went to Jasper County. I think you ought to give these students a hand. And that's all I have to say. That's one of the state boards that I serve on, that I monitor very closely, so we thank you, Mr. Chairman. Go ahead, so we can get out of here.
Mr. Rau?
Yeah, I got a couple of things. One, I like that I could have the same thing, Councilwoman Clark, about the two students receiving those, that is amazing for our area. Secondly, I met with Beaufort Jasper's governmental affairs gentleman to discuss some of the capital improvement things that are in our region, and to some of the underserved areas in Jasper County, to include the Levy area. So we had some pretty good discussions on that. Hopefully, some of those can come to fruition in the future. I did go to JARM on two separate occasions. I would like to commend them for turning it around, and the cleanliness up there was definitely a good feel going up there, and then taking a look at that and being greeted with a tour of the facility. Also, I did have the opportunity to meet with some of the pilots at the airport, good group of guys, and they were showing me some of the things that they do out there. Had the opportunity to meet with our representative, Bill Hager, just to kind of introduce and get to know him, since I'm newly elected to the council. I would like to say, I did like the workshop that we had on the 1% tax referendum the other day, with the regional approach that we worked together with both municipalities. Hopefully, we're able to work more on those regional approaches to get things accomplished in the county, to include some of the donut holes and zoning. The one thing that I did vote on tonight that passed through was already approved, and I told the developer prior to, had I been on here earlier, I would have voted to encourage him to annex, to eliminate the donut holes inside the county. So hopefully, we can do a regional approach to some of these, when it comes to some of these donut holes in and outside the unincorporated and incorporated limits on both the south and north ends of the county. And then also, lastly, I've been getting a lot of things as far as code enforcement. I have spoke to Chief Wells. I'm going to get with him again on a couple of other issues that were brought to my attention to hopefully remedy some of the code enforcement issues folks are having complaints about, and that's all that I have.
Mr. Kim?
Gee, I'm really going to be quick on this one. I attended the Riverport Open House at Hardyville Library. It was overflowing, a lot of attention to it, a lot of people interested, and the last thing is, you were invited to our ribbon cutting. The Honey Hill Battlefield is going to be July 23rd at 10:00 a.m. It's something for everyone, and it's part of history, and once it becomes viable, we'll have a great tourist attraction. Thank you.
I attended the airport commission meeting last week. I've had a few meetings with different pilots, working on some initiatives out there, some concerns that they have as well. Wanted to reiterate what a couple of council members mentioned about John Gay and Oswald Trajo. One thing about Oswald is he was the 2024 valedictorian as well, so it was kind of cool to see him participating in the aeronautics program and see them have two come out of Jasper County, it's pretty special. And then the big announcement on the amount of money that was awarded to the Friends of Honey Hill, for that to be certified with the national parks, for a battlefield site, a restoration battlefield is going to be pretty special, and Mr. Milton and the board and Ms. Kathleen and everybody who's participated in that, and thank you for your volunteer hours and what you've done to get that to this point, it's pretty phenomenal, so thank you for that as well. I was invited to go to the crest release last Thursday, and also with Mayor Williams and the Riverport group to the social function that afternoon for the drop-in, but my aunt passed away, actually, at 5:00 o'clock that day, and the doctors called us in about 11:00, so that's why I was not present. So I had my, having a day occupied by something I'd rather not have to go through and experience with, but she's in a better place now, and has fought cancer for over a year, and it's amazing that cancer does not discriminate, so that's about all I have at the moment. And at this time, we will call for a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor, stand up. Thank you all for being here.